All right, Washington County Board of County Commissioners now in session. We're going to start with an invocation by Johnny Evans, followed by the pledge. If anyone would please stand.
Oh, we come to you, Lord, from the public, and we pray that you just launch over these things, and launch over all the officials here, and we pray that you just guide them, and direct them, and avoid, you would have them go, and we pray that you keep them in all of these courts here.
Amen. Y'all, we don't want no pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're going to start off with a public hearing on the small-scale flu amendment.
Good morning. This is a small-scale amendment. The subject property is 4.35 acres. It's off of Highway 77, and it's the applicant, Mr. Tolbert Safer. The current property, existing future land use now, is agricultural/silvicultural, and the proposed future land use will be commercial. As you can see, just south of 77, there's some commercial south of there. This is just south of the city limits of Wausau, maybe a mile, a mile and a half. The gentleman is requesting this because he's wanting to become a used car, acquire his license to sell some used cars, and the state of Florida requires that your property be designated as general commercial. So the state law states that any person, firm, partnership, or corporation that buys, sells, offers for sale, displays for sale, or deals in three or more motor vehicles in a 12-month period is presumed to be a motor vehicle dealer and must have appropriate licenses issued by the state. So in the meetings that we had, he had a neighborhood information meeting, which there were no comments. The public hearing for the planning commission was held, and there were no comments at that. The planning commission does recommend approval based off the staff recommendations and the conditions, and we did hold a public hearing today, and the condition is that any development shall be reviewed and approved by Washington County Planning Commission. So if you have any questions? That's all I have for that one. I do have Mr. Tolbert Safer here, if you do have any questions for him as well.
I think we spoke about it in workshop itself.
Yes, sir.
But anything, any further development would have to come through the planning commission.
Yes, sir. There's a development review committee requirement.
Okay. That would just, I've got a, David May, who has a man, that's just there. Anything that says about this, this is definitely what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the hearing on the small-scale flu amendment and move on to the large-scale flu amendment.
Okay, we have Mr. Jim Towne that will be presenting on the large-scale amendment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the record, I'm Jim Towne of Business Evaluation and Appraisal, and we're representing Washington Square Holding Corporation, the owner of the 156.6 acres at the corner of Highway 79 and Pay Pond Road. This is a long-term development. As you'll see when we talk about the timeline, the property has been in the family for two generations, and they want to develop it with a quality product as the market will support the development. There's nothing speculative about it at all. I want to talk a little bit about the larger regional impact. I don't think Mr. Massey has seen my low-tech pointer before, but... Of course, this is I-10 crossing here, City of Bonifay, Highway 79, from down through Vernon, Ebro, New Hope, and on down to the beach. Highway 79 is the main corridor to the beach for people coming from the central, south, and midwest. They work their way east and west, east and west, east and west, until they get up here in Alabama, and they can link up with the road that comes straight on down to the beach. So as this highway is four-laned, it's going to have a much higher traffic count than it has today, although its traffic count is comparable to Highway 77 over here in Shifley at the moment, but it will be larger. There are some other things going on on Highway 79 that fit in to the thinking for this development. First of all, this is the only spot in Washington County that has two interstate interchanges. Pay Pond Road, as you know, goes up here to Caryville, that's an interchange, and of course, 79 is an interchange, and then we have 77 over here. So this site services two of the three I-10 interchanges in the county. It has sewer and water in the immediate area, and I'll talk about that just a little bit later, but up here at I-10 and 79 is 1,525 acres where the 79 corridor project will go in. That's the Bonifay-Homes County/Washington County inter-local agreement that you all have been briefed on before. There is a community, about 600 acres, halfway between here and Vernon, that's designed to be an equestrian community, upper market. Whether it ever gets past the pretty picture, dream book phase, we don't know, but it is there about halfway. Of course, sewer and water with the corridor will be down here to the vicinity of Highway 280 where Douglas Ferry. South of here, State Route 20 is on the 20-year plan for study for widening to four lanes, which gives us another east-west corridor through the southern end of the county. Also, down in this area, the Knight Family Trust has 55,000 acres basically from the airport on up into this vicinity. 48,000 acres of that is in Washington County. That has already been master planned to the dream, pretty picture phase in terms of tying in with the concepts outlined in the West Bay Sector Plan, which is the airport, and the Walton County Sector Annex. So south of here, down to the coast, there are developments on books for over 150,000 residential units, combinations, apartments, single-family condominiums. That's history. It's just a question of when it starts to build out, and it's a 50-year projection. So don't drive down there this weekend and see what's going on, because you won't see anything. But there's a lot in this vicinity, and having this point that has two interstate interchanges is a great benefit. But are there any questions on how the larger picture fits together? Okay, I'll get away from the projector here then. This is the way the site is configured today. We've got commercial on the point. It's been there since 1995 update. Across the middle is single-family residential. Upper left is conservation, and upper right is agriculture/silviculture. This has been on the books for years. We discovered when we did the preliminary work that the wetlands and the conservation areas aren't necessarily where they're depicted on the county maps, but that's not unusual because those were done from, you know, way up in the air and somebody sitting at a desk. So it's not unusual, from a developer's point of view, to find the wetlands in a different place than they are in the county map, and they'll be updated as we do the wetlands delineations. Here's the plan for the property. Starting at the point, will be commercial with a good-sized convenience store and diesel pumps out behind, because the larger commercial property along 79 is to be a large RV park. The pads are 30 by 80 to accommodate these big fancy rigs. They'll have sewer, water, television, internet hookups, all of that stuff. There again, having two interchanges on I-10 helps out greatly, depending on which way the RV people are coming at the area. Above that is the single-family residential area. That part of the property is pretty, although it has some wetlands issues, and I'll address those on the next slide. Coming around the corner, there's a little 10-acre parcel. That will be self-service storage, and that'll be the first parcel that has construction on it, and I'll address that later. Then the last parcel is that, I'm not sure what color it is, it's less than yellow anyway. That's where the high-density apartments, condominiums will go in the very last phase of development, 2030 to 2035, because that's when we feel the population growth may support that type of thing. So on the next slide, there's the wetlands. Roughly half the property has wetlands, if you look at the total acreage. That's the bad news. The good news is that on the southern end, and where the RV park is planned, are what DEP calls low-quality wetlands. That means you can mitigate those by purchasing wetlands elsewhere and trade so you can develop in the wetlands, put your floor elevations above any flood plain, and off you go. So that makes the corner usable because there's low-quality wetlands, and we can mitigate those. Mitigating wetlands takes about two years. The issue for this corner, and several people have asked, is, "Well, why don't you build on the corner first?" Well, first, to apply for the wetlands permits, you have to have a land use change, which we're doing here today. Then you start the process of mitigation permits. Just the permits are $28,000, and you have multiple state and federal agencies involved, so we've allowed two years for that to occur, and you'll see on the master timeline that the first area to develop will be the storage area. That's 10 acres, half of it is uplands and half of it is wetlands, and we don't need to mitigate that because the five acres that are already high and dry provide enough space to build all four of the storage buildings, but they'll only build one in the initial phase. Okay, here's the sequence, 2017, 2018. When we set this sequence, it was, we thought we'd be doing the presentation last December that we're doing today, so that may slide to 2018, 2019. By the time that we get to do that, we'll be back, there will be five different development orders on this parcel, and they have already been surveyed out according to the last slide. The real reason for doing five separately is because the uses are unique, and since we're not building it out in a consecutive process, the Regional Planning Commission thought we should do separate planning orders, development orders, and we concur with that because when you do the wetlands delineation, the environmental people actually go out to see the little flags. So there's no sense going out there next month and surveying 156 acres and putting the little flags every 50 feet and only officially delineate the first 10 acres, because two years from now, the wetlands will have all changed down on the point because some will have been mitigated, and of course, later, when we get to the RV park, it's just easier to do it when you're getting ready to build than it is to go back and do it again. So 2018, 2020 is our mitigation process. If we get finished a little sooner, construction will start a little sooner. Construction of the point is the trigger event for the RV park, because you need the store, the diesel fuel, and all that to make the RV park work. So 2021 is convenience store, 2122, RV park. It's being designed for 200 spaces. Only 100 will be built initially to test the market, and I think now they'll probably build every other space that's in the design, and then depending on what type of spaces has the highest demand, they can come back and fill in those type of spaces within the total development. But it'll be 100 spaces initially. The single-family is 259 units. It's envisioned to be middle to slightly upmarket, be good-sized lots, and it's rolling terrain where it's dry up there. Then the last part is 2030, 2032, the timing's a little iffy, will we project out that far? But it's 222 units, whether they'll be condos or apartments or some combination will be decided at the time they apply for the development approval, development order. I've already touched on that, there'll be five separate development orders, so you're gonna, well, you won't be seeing me all the way to the end. I'd be, 25 years from now, I'd be approaching 100 years, but somebody will come back and get those development orders. Next slide. I stated this upfront, and I want to emphasize it with a separate slide. This property's been in the family two generations. They intend to own it all the way through. They want quality development. The development team is quality people. They have Porter-Miller Engineering. We've got Martin Grotzky, the environmental side of it, so we're going slow with quality. Next slide. Water and sewer, this is the big challenge. We need to get it over the creek, and thanks to Commissioner Hawkins, when he was down in Vernon, the hangers for it are already on the bridge, so that speeds it up. The plan, and we've met three times with the City of Vernon now, twice officially and once on the side with their engineer, the city has no money to speculatively put the sewer and water over the creek. The developer will undoubtedly enter into a public-private arrangement with the City of Vernon that will have no financial recourse to the City of Vernon. Or to say it differently, the developer's going to get the sewer and water over the river, over the creek, and he'll get paid back from future users as they connect onto the system. So that's the plan. At some point, I'll come back and explain the details once we get them negotiated and signed with the City of Vernon. This is just some hypothetical numbers. If we were developing it today, what the ad valorem would come out to for Washington County would add about 714,000 to your tax roll. The school board gets about 535,000, and the City of Vernon gets 186,000 plus the sewer and water revenues. This is just a recap, but these 156 acres, as a minimum, kick in $1.4 million onto the various tax rolls, and that's without getting into fuel taxes and sale tax revenue sharing and all the other stuff. So responsible development in Washington County is very important to tax roll growth, and as I've said many times, you know, we need to put growth in its place, and the planning department and the planning commission drives your ad valorem tax rolls. So we've got a good plan. We've had all the approvals up to this point. Next slide. This is the economic impact. This emphasizes a couple of points. The numbers probably aren't as important, although we had one in the paper a few weeks ago, $32 million economic impact coming. The point is that our workforce, 68% leaves the county every day, so they purchase things elsewhere. The actual discretionary income of the households leaves the county, 62% according to one economist's study that we had done a few years ago. So while we've got a $32 million economic impact in the Vernon area, and there's only 3% of the county population within five miles of Vernon, so whether it's 32 million or it's a net of 20 million, it's a big number to Vernon. So the population, it'll have about 1,000. 1,000 people divided up into 481 households. You could anticipate about 160 students in the school system. The school system impact fees, we haven't tried to project at this time simply because our school population's declining, which means the impact fees for the education system are going up, and I have no idea how to project that kind of number. Next slide.
I'll tell you, with some growth like that, that town, that Commissioner Hawkins come up in, they may even put that place on the map, though.
I think it'll be on the map, yes.
I mean, that'd be, I mean, that's a...
Mr. Towne clarified, and we're all, roads lead.
That's true. I made the comment at the neighborhood information meeting down in Vernon, but all roads lead to Vernon when you start looking at this, because Vernon was, of course, the county seat, but back then, the county went all the way to the bay before we lost the real money down on the beach. But that was in 1912, so nobody knew about that.
Nobody wanted that.
Are there any questions for me? Okay, I'll yield to the staff then.
Do you have any questions for planning staff?
Everybody okay?
I'm good. Thank you so much. Thank y'all for all y'all's hard work. Mr. Towne, we appreciate your hard work on this project, and planning department and the department, we appreciate y'all.
Y'all pick that ball back up and rank, and I do appreciate it also.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, hearing none, closing the public hearing on large-scale flu amendment. Next up is adopt the agenda, because it won't have any changes.
I've got one, Mr. Chairman, under my section. I would like to talk about a plan for a grant, DPO, the Seven Mile Project we stumbled upon.
Okay.
I'll leave that under my section.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have a couple of items I would like to add as non-agenda. One is purchase lease agreement for a piece of equipment, a mixer for Public Works. Add that on there to look at, and I'm also going to bring back up the Big Ben Building.
Okay, I want to add the non-agenda audience. I'm going to put it between adopt previous minutes and set agenda.
Do I know what we're doing?
The non-agenda audience portion was left off of the previous. So I'm just going to put it between the, it says four and five, where she belongs. Hearing no other changes because of the motion.
I'm making the motion to adopt the agenda with the previously mentioned conditions.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we need to adopt the previous minutes from the June 21st, 2017 workshop and the June 22nd, 2017 board meeting.
Somebody.
Second. I've got a motion and a second, but I do have a question. Richard, is that, both those are 17, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the non-agenda audience portion. We have a couple of people that have signed up. Mr. Goodman, would you like to mention that?
Yes, I will.
Well, I don't have the verbiage in front of me right now.
Wait, is that official, is that official?
Go ahead, Jim.
Holmes County Board of County Commissioners, please welcome. I'm already thrown off. The Washington County Board of County Commissioners, please welcome me to the meeting today. This is the public comment section. It's not a question-and-answer section. Please come to the podium, state your name and the topic we'll be addressing. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, and we appreciate your participation in the meeting. Thanks.
Good job. Good job.
Except for the card, I...
Oh, yeah, you got, have the gates doubled, but after that, you got more.
Okay, first up, we have Richard and/or Barbara Smith. Okay. Let's try that. Aaron, from Rooted Area, Root? No? Okay. Anyone else like to say anything? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. We're on to the agenda. Item A is request approval for the clerk of the court to pay voucher, settling $3,885,587.89. B is crime stoppers. Washington County County Crime Stoppers shall be the only designated agent to receive money from the Crime Stoppers Trust Fund. EMP, a grant. This is down for the library. Mercksey Mady, okay. For Mercksey Mady. And then we have, where's the library? Item E is Library Construction Grant Resolution, resubmit. Then we have the Uffrey Road Sidewalk Resolution. G, we have the variance request that we just heard. Item H, the Small-Scale Flu Amendment. Item I, the Large-Scale Amendment. Item J, the Option and Lease Agreement, Extension Camel Park Cell Tower. Item L is the Communications Committee Resolution. That revision will, the current resolution, 1714 Annual Reporting will be performed in September of each year instead of July and coincides with the budget cycle. Item M is the Overhead Distribution Easement for Gulf Power. N is the Chatham Hachy Bay Estuary Liaison, which would be Commissioner Bush and alternative Commissioner Hawkins. O is the Health Insurance Refund Money Funds will be earmarked to be applied toward annual insurance increases.
Mr. P, you just left off item K.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Item K is a value adjustment board, I'm sorry, which the system will be Gary Hartman and Commissioner Trey Hawkins and Commissioner Steve Jordan.
I'll make the motion if we adopt the, or approve the consent.
Motion, my Commissioner Abbott.
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Bush, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, I have to just, here, I'll have to find my page. Okay, here we are on agenda items. First, we have the Health Insurance Renewal Premium for Benefits, Ms. Robin Riley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Robin Riley from Brown and Brown. I have been working with Florida Blue through the week, and they're processing to separate out the county from the sheriff to see what the rate is going to come in it. I received a call this morning, so they're able to give us a rate with just the county only. The sheriff, because there are less than 100 employees, they have to go through the manual rating process, so it's going to take another week to get that. But right now, if the county stand by itself, we're looking at an 8% increase versus the And also just want to, you know, I know we talked about it last week, because last year, this is when we got the county and the sheriff together, because we showed huge significant savings with having both together, and just with the county and sheriff combined, your rating has a higher credibility status factor, where claims experience and demographics have a higher weight on your renewal versus a weight, a manual rating from the carrier side, which is higher, especially if your claims are running low, which the county's claims are running very well, so that would only hurt the county in doing that. And also just to reiterate the benefits for the county and the sheriff being combined, the larger of the number of people that you have to spread the risk, the better that, and the more stability that the plan is going to have. And also, like we said at the last meeting, the pro-share-plus program that the county's part of, this next year, your return, your money that you'll be receiving back is going to be greater because you've got the sheriff onboard. This will be the first year that the sheriff has been part of that, but last year, we did receive 105,000, so as long as the claims continue running favorably, then you're going to have an even more favorable return next year. So as long as the claims continue running favorably, then, then you're gonna have an even more favorable return next year. And then also Florida Blue provides groups that are above 150, 200 range. You've got the Better You Benefit Program where Florida Blue has a team of people from Better You Blue, Better You Blue that come onto site here to do a health risk assessment for the employees where they do the biometric screening, the finger prick, and then they have the health risk assessment. There, the employees can complete the health risk assessment to see how their bodies, how, how, how you're, you're faring. A lot of people don't go to the doctors if they, if they don't feel bad. And sometimes if you have the same feeling day in and day out, you don't know that something's going on with, with your body if you're not going to the doctor. So it's always good to have those health years, health biometric screening events to where everyone knows how everything's going. And again, this is a voluntary basis, but a program that is no cost to the county. Florida Blue offers that on behalf of their, their accounts.
I wonder if maybe through human resources, we should take advantage of that program, if we have somebody come to, to the site, maybe here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Abbott came here.
Y'all can discuss that later, but I, I would like to see that. And it's, I've had that done personally one time and it's real interesting what they can tell with just a brick of. How your circulation, I mean, it's amazing what they can tell.
And then even on the, another positive end of that, once everything's done, then they provide us with an aggregate report. It doesn't pinpoint anyone's name, but it's an aggregate report that says out of your population, 32% are, you know, have high blood pressure, unknown high blood pressure or, or 5% are at high risk. So then we can sit down with the Florida Blue team and look at programs and, and education pieces to do throughout the year.
They can come up and say, Todd, you need to lose some weight.
My question was, when we started this, was it 11% increase correct before the negotiations started?
Yes.
Okay, without, you know, negotiate, without any negotiations before, would we come back at 8%?
Five.
No, 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 no.
Well.
When we split it.
If we drop off the sheriff's.
If we do, yeah, that's my question. Okay.
It's gonna be higher overall.
Yeah, what, do you want to?
It's gonna be higher overall.
You, my, my, my line of question is, is when we first come in together, we come in at 11% rate, without negotiation. You're part of apples to apples. Yes, that's what I'm saying. So we put it back out and we come in at 8% without the sheriff's.
Right.
And the sheriff's department has a younger workforce.
Yes.
Normally speaking.
But they also have higher claims.
Okay, well, I understand we're in a, in a time crunch this year, kind of speaking to our HR department that this is something that we're relatively, we've got to move relatively quickly on. And we don't really have to wait to wait to come back in and still get through with our deadlines and all.
Yeah, but it's not, it's already shown enough information where it's gonna be more expensive.
Right.
We're not sure where, but it's already shown enough difference where we know that the rate, rate of increase is gonna be higher already.
I'd be interested in that number if I could get that, but I, I'm, I'm a little bit worried about it on the day, just being, being timed.
Just, just.
Just to see.
Just.
Well, I just thought I'd have that number, see if it works out.
Absolutely.
And because there was a time that when we separated them, it showed an overall savings. And I think it was primarily, primarily due to the sheriff's department and some, some people that were more senior.
It don't take, it don't take a rocket science figure out if you go from 11 to five, you go from eight to lower than that.
Well, and I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And I don't know if, I'm, I'm assuming that, and I'll go back and, and, you know, make sure that this is correct, but.
Overall, it's a 5% increase overall.
Right.
Yeah. Next year, just, can we get this started maybe lower so we have more options? Or I know that I've spoken to the HR department, they said something about the hospitals getting the numbers back to you late and this, that. It's not really necessary that anyone's, but if we could just speed this up maybe next year where we have more time to digest it and look at it, one of the best, again, a dollar saves a dollar in my book. And if we could do that, I just want to do the best what we can for the constituents.
Absolutely.
But we did start at 11 and then negotiate down to five. We was just looking at further trade. When y'all, the two of y'all, I think, mentioned to, to make some adjustments with the sheriff's department if it was lower. And it helped with enough study to see that it was gonna be higher, but you don't have to bottom line.
Not for the sheriff.
I'm, I'm satisfied.
I am too.
But I'm satisfied. I'm, I'm very happy that we're able to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Oh, absolutely.
And I know that the, the negotiations have done a lot, but also know that having the group combined provides us for that ability to negotiate more. And that being said, I'm, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we renew with our, our health insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield and leave it combined with sheriff's.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Now that the, I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page here because it's something that's very important. And it's important to all of us. This 5% increase. With this return that they've given us, because our numbers are good, I wanna make sure that we're applying that to, I, I don't want the, the employees to have to offset this 5%. I want, I want the county to take the.
No. I thought we declared a consent.
That was a consent. When the cash carried forward comes in and the next thing comes around, then that'll be your one. Am I miscorrect?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Still not done. Sorry. Now we have to talk about the dental, because last time we, I presented the dental, your dental plan is coming in at a at a 9% increase. And I have several options, but the one that I was recommending, because I know that the network is, is good, they have the dental providers in this area, is the Guardian. And that brings it to a rate decrease of 5%. And then the, we talked about the vision and I know that Mr. Hawkins liked the proposal from Humana. It was a rate decrease of 13%. But after evaluating the network in this area, there, the network is not a viable network in this area. And Guardian, again, does have that network that the employees would be able to have access to a larger network.
Which was an increase of what?
It was a decrease of 5%.
So the dental, the dental and the vision was both a 5% decrease?
Yes, yes, sir.
And the vision was a 5%?
And we had Guardian two years ago, correct?
Yes.
They were, they were a good network. So I'll make a motion that we go with Guardian for both the dental and the.
Motion and a second. All in favor? My comfortable statement. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I need to hear it.
Rich, before I go on to the next one, do y'all have the attended, um, papers, show papers last night?
Sure, I don't need them. I emailed it.
Is it on our, maybe on our work? It may be on our work.
Yes, I, I have it right here.
Can we get it, Jackie, maybe, and, um, will you mind?
I had Jackie looking for it. We'll need that for the.
Okay, next up is voting precinct reduction and it's under me. Ms. Carol Rudd was held up in Texas and for medical reasons unable to fly. So for the record, what we're gonna do is we're gonna hold that off until the, the next meeting, which will be advertised. I will say that her people did, the people that she was talking with on the, on the purchases of, of the equipment, they came in late yesterday with the numbers, so we actually have some good numbers in the board. We'll have some time to go over them. Just wanted to give everyone a update.
So you're gonna table that?
What did she have to make a decision on, purchases?
Uh, she, she's called me several times, several times. She's fine, I mean, with us dealing with that. Actually, I mean, y'all should have it. I'm not, I'm sure that you do, it was sent everywhere. But when I was explaining it, there was some real good numbers that came in from the supplier and it's not gonna be as tough as it looked originally, so, but I wanted to explain all that. All right, next up is the Airport Authority Appointment. And I'm gonna pass this over here for just a minute. Commissioner Abbott, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend Jim Town for appointment of the Airport Authority. I spoke with him and I think y'all have, have gotten earlier the, his qualifications. How about the strike? Mr. Towns, please agree to do that.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second. I don't know if there's.
All in favor?
Now with the attended village, we need to set that today.
So we got all departments, I'm sorry, we got, we got all, we got all department budgets in at, at this time being?
Not 100%.
Ms. Rudd was sent out yesterday.
The what?
Ms. Rudd was sent out yesterday. She should have.
Yeah, I mean, it, it should be on everybody, but I mean, I, I know a little bit about it. I mean, I got it. I, I saw it late, so.
That, that is everyone's. Is hers an increase or is it, I didn't see an increase?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be an increase, but what I've, I already explained, but there, there's a one, there's a one time fee that, that is, that we're gonna have to pay no matter what. And then it's gonna be.
How's the budget looking? I can't pretend it's bringing in.
Of course, bringing in a balanced budget, that, that won't be an issue. The issue will come is when we start discussing things that we don't necessarily have to have, like every budget here. And some things are pulled out and some things are like a wish list. I mean, it's dual.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rollback rate of 9.2235 for a total of $7,719,235, which would be a, an actual decrease of where we're at today.
Can you repeat the number?
$7,719,235. It's a rollback rate of 9.2235. And right now, we're at 9.2520, so actually reducing the rate.
Got a motion and a second. I believe this will need to be a roll call. We will start.
Trey, always start a.
Trey.
That's all. I, I enjoy this seat down here. You always start.
We didn't have to arm her.
All right. Yeah, yeah. Me, the second, and I made a motion, I think it's not gonna be common sense.
Next up, we have the hazardous material awareness week. WFR PC Plan.
Good morning. I'm Senator Rick Rogers, David Polka with the West Quarter Regional Planning Council. I'm here on behalf of Kathy Allen. This is just to get a motion to approve the week, sorry, the week of August 14th as, as a hazardous material awareness week. If you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer.
Have we seen anything on that? Was there any?
Any.
Paper or document that we want to ask, anything to read?
Did you get the resolution?
The proclamation?
Yes.
This is our.
This is all she provided me with for you guys to sign. I'm not sure if any backup material.
The proclamation.
Yeah, she said, we are the first county to adopt it and we have the absentee counties afterward, which are going to be our next. And she had it one county on the 20th day of her state, but the first one.
Is it time sensitive? When is the, what week is it? I'm sorry.
Um, August 14th.
Wow. Two weeks, three weeks.
We have an obligation.
No way that might. Mr. Goodman, any advice, sir?
Table it, let me look at it in a break.
And bring it back up.
Say we turn four breaks.
We'll have a break, come back.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table that and then we'll pick it back up while we have a break. All right, um, good work. Johnny, you got anything?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've been doing some research. I think I got here, buddy, a copy. You didn't got it. Let me know. There's a lease for the mixer and then a buyout for the mixer. I had Mr. Stevens got him to look over it, but y'all look over that. Let us know which way you want to go on that. We've also located this little boy truck. Billy Getler went over yesterday and looked at it and he said it was a fine piece of truck, so I don't know if we'll discuss that now or not, but it's a, looks like a pretty good deal. It's a '07 Mac, all Mac, no death fluid, no tear. He ain't got a foot with none of that. It's pretty much set up. I think we may have to get a hydraulic thing to go on it, but it's got the wet pack and all that we need, but you can pick up the hydraulic paper.
What was that price, Johnny? Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, a little 38.
I've, I've seen pictures of the truck.
And I, I had some pictures here that I printed out early this morning that I pulled up on.
My big thing was, is it as good as it looks in the picture? And according to Billy said, it's a pretty short truck.
Billy, Billy was, was very impressed with it. Y'all.
And if I'm not mistaken, for the year, the truck mileage is not high either.
Very low. I think it's 167,000 dollars. Which is very, very low for a '07 truck.
Trey, what you think you.
It's a good truck. Good, one bad truck you buy on the road, the driver's not ready to walk.
You can tell by that picture, it's got the Camelback riers.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Understand the price is right. It's a good looking truck.
Good truck.
I believe it's got brand new tires too.
He, Billy said all of them look brand new except for one and it had minimal wear on the, or two of the rears had minimal wears.
That's it, they. It's not worth it, he spit it out.
Grab your trash on one side. Um, and, and in our budget, I, I do have enough in our equipment for that.
Yes, they want to be getting back on the other truck that burns, but not sure whether they can bring some back yet.
I told her right before I came in here, that's one of the reasons I've been trying to get a, I was trying to sign in to see if she's promised me, she would forward it to me, she got it. They were waiting on the appraiser that came out to your, to the yard. He's been trying to get some information on parts and all that and look for other vehicles, similar vehicles, age wise and all that. But she could not give me one this, as of this morning. She said it just takes, you know, a few days. They had told her they had something by yesterday, I couldn't even, I haven't.
Well, Johnny, if you've got that in your budget, I'll make a motion that we purchase this truck to, to, I mean, something that we've gotta have.
Yes, we got a motion by Mr. Abbott. Second by Commissioner Bush.
He's closer, I heard.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Um, and something on the bush hogs, um, I tried to get ahold of Cory this morning, he's not answering his phone, I called the office, um, and asked the lady up there if we were still intending to be on for next week, she said that, uh, one of the bush hogs was there, the bush hog rig was there early this week, and the two, other two should arrive Monday. But she couldn't tell me about the tractors. Now, last time I talked to Cory, one tractor was on site, and the other one was, um, I forget where, it wasn't too far off.
What makes sense in the holdup is this.
I don't understand this, because, but they told me they don't build the bush hogs to your...
And one ain't...
The company's right there, up above them there.
Yes, Johnny, they, what they do is they, they build them, they build them to order, so it's not like they have a yard full of bush hogs that you go pick from, when they submit an order, they build you a bush hog.
Well, you got one that's ready and one two that's not, is the, the two that's not the same one?
I think they're most of fifteen foot, I think the one that's there is the ten foot, I'll say. Well, I guess we're, you know, excited, we got somebody setting seat on them, once we get them here, they're going to need to put a big rush on it if we, if we...
Y'all got somebody setting seats up the tractors, then?
I've got one person I can put in the seat. That's something we definitely want to, I know we work with y'all, HR, to get somebody.
Right, I've got... We'll have people in the seat, there's, there's some other things at play here, when our tractors get here, all four of them are going to be running.
Now, forgive me if I'm wrong, that was the plan before we ever approved order, to have four bush hogs and one in Sunday Hills to be getting.
Todd, we're going to take your regulator off, we're going to put them on.
Whatever you got.
I got them on both of them.
But Johnny, I'll help you with, uh, that rundown, I'll, I'll give that gentleman a call myself today.
We all get more calls.
Well, and I, I told him first, I want to do...
I, I want to, yeah, which one of y'all wants to handle, but I definitely want to talk about this.
So, so maybe next week you'll have one.
I'm looking this week, I've got all, all, everything.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, this, uh, this mixture that we've got information on, Mr., uh, Johnny had, um, got some quotes on renting one about a month, like twenty-five thousand dollars a month.
Twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars a month, um, they put brand-new teeth on it when you rented it, and when you turned it back, you had to buy another set for them to put on, so you're looking at probably another five thousand dollars, so, yeah, about, about twenty-seven thousand to rent it for a month.
And under our state contract, our governmental lease, we can lease one sixty months, fifty-four, uh, fifty-four hundred dollars, or fifty, five thousand four and fifty-one dollars, and, uh, then we can buy it out at the end of sixty months, or we can buy it out at any time, but, um...
That lease, is that a month?
Yeah, yeah, for sixty months, yeah.
I'm excited about, I'm excited about that, that's something that, that's really been a thorn in the side of, I know this commission. My question is, would they provide some sort of training, or can we let somebody do that training?
Yeah, we'll have to, uh, get somebody's tool left on that, and that equip, that piece of equipment needs to be monitored daily by, by the cannon, when it's running, the, because you can damage the drum if you don't...
Varyes.
...put anything to teeth on it, so, uh, and, and the purpose for it, for the public is to, we've put down, built asphalt now for several years, and, uh, some of the kinds of points where we can't reasonably patch it, we've got to do something, there's some reclamation on it, and this mixer will do that reclamation. Some of the asphalt we've got down is ten to fifteen years old.
Yes, sir.
And when we put it down, and we don't have to, at that point, we stop hauling dirt to that road, we stop raiding that road, so our maintenance costs are way down on the road, but it's come to the point now where we've got this reclamation somewhere, and you can't just get a contractor to come in and do this without, uh, you know, a large cost, so it would be more beneficial for us to lace this thing and, uh, put it to work.
Absolutely.
Now, can you help me with this, um, is the Caterpillar value option, is it, like, it seems to be cheap, or what am I missing on this?
What do you got?
The first two, the thirty-sixth and the sixth, but the first two are, um, CBO.
It, it kind of works out because if you'll notice your, um, your buyout value at the end of both of those options, that, uh, the monthly payment is a little bit lower, but your buyout option is higher than the, the governmental. The governmental's got a higher payment than the, than the buyout's lower.
For thirty-five dollars a month, you're saving forty thousand dollars in, in the buyout.
So, but, yeah, so basically it's like... I just saw it.
But, uh...
Now, I just want to talk about paying for it. Wait, 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 we got a, have we got a funding source, Johnny, are, are you aware, I mean...
I'm, I'm looking, working on it.
We all have been talking about this for quite some time, in fact, Mr. Tom had done a lot of research before.
Yes, we're...
Right, right now, I know that there's about, um, a little over forty-five, I think, exactly, forty-eight, five, or something like that, there was a, uh, it was in the budget from last year to lease, I, Motorgram, and it was fifty thousand, I think five hundred something came out, that right there would be enough to carry us to the end of, of this year, and then...
These will have to budget it.
And then we'll just have to budget it, which, I mean, there's enough equipment, uh, monies in their requests to, to handle that.
All set, and we'll still be fine. There are new requests, there's not equipment.
We can put the same fifty back in like we did last year, on, on the same, on the same lease deal, I mean, it'd be a little bit short, but...
Now, what does that mean?
Sixty-five back, sixty-five.
Johnny, before we order it in and get it coming, let's, commission, let's, let's find a school, or find some sort of training, aid?
Well, Caterpillar will bring it out and deliver it, and they'll do that.
Well, okay, that's great.
The delivery process on it, uh...
To train someone on it, sir, Bob?
Yeah, and we've got a couple of operators that, probably two of them that you're going to assign to that machine.
Okay. Long as we got some way to utilize it, you know, let me hit the ground.
There's not a piece of equipment you wouldn't run that today.
No, no, no.
Could we try it on Cudges Mill Road on the train?
On the train?
Yeah.
Just, just deliver, deliver it out there, too.
I always got one of the worst ones in the, in the county.
Yeah, and...
Sandbag.
Sandbag.
It's a permanent mark.
Sandbag. And that's not my district, but I, Greg, me and that run there, be this hurt.
Out there in New York.
Oh, my god.
That's why I said Jim on the airport, it's like a flyover.
Asphalt drum?
Yeah, there's, there's three different drums.
Asphalt.
Uh, so we're looking at thirty-six...
This is the, wait a minute, what, now, monthly use room?
Yeah, yeah, it'll do it all, it'll do dirt and all, but you have, you've got one of this dirt, and it's got a kind of mid-range, and then you got one that, that you do with asphalt that does it all.
Yeah. The fancy.
We, we didn't have other uses for it, other than...
Absolutely.
And, uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, that we do this governmental lease payment sixty months, uh, for fifty-four, fifty-one, and free, and the purchase price of, of the buyout after sixty months, a hundred nineteen thousand two hundred...
Got a motion, well, Mr. Abbott, second, by Mr. Jordan, all in favor?
Aye.
And, and again, for the public knowledge, we're buying and putting down more and more and more built asphalt, until we can get funding to have it paved, and then we've got a base to that, you know, and we're at the savings, is Mr. Jordan, he's not hauling anymore dirt.
In the past few months, this is around King Kitchen, Cudges Mill, this is probably like, two miles altogether, uh, we're working on Chance Road, we're, that's two miles altogether, we're a little over halfway through the management.
Well, not to mention all these female birds that we just did, I believe it, go back and reshape some of them in the future if they need it, and, I mean, they're...
And it would, I think it would work great, too, on one of these, um, these drills that we brought.
That's, that's one coming.
Not even the older ones, that we've done, you know, they get a little hot hole on scrapings, but if you go in there and churn it, and patch it, it's just, it'll be good for a little while.
A lot of those, a lot of those older ones need to be reshaped, just as well as the...
And you got that cab roller that, you know, you can run right back open.
Hauling the rain and everything, because I heard they burned it, too. Um, I think that's about it, y'all have anything to say?
I'd like to convince you on the, on the time and fashion to fix the bridge on Budweiser, get it open, I got my phone, my phone has settled down a little bit.
I wish I could say it was going to be the same with the one on Duncan now, but, uh...
Well, thank you, you're a wonderful...
Close the album.
Yeah, what's, what's...
Mr. Steve promised me he would give out my phone number, it's called one of the ladies that lives there goes to our church, so...
What is the status on the Duncan?
Uh, we tore into it, and, um, I've expressed some, to get some of y'all other piles we put in, but, or the late seventies or whatever.
At least seven foot, right?
It was, yeah, it was a more than that, um, so when we got into it, I talked to Mr. Steve, too, about it, I think I talked to you, but, um, we've got the materials, so we're just going to go ahead and rebuild head walls, put new pylons in, new stringers, caps, and everything, um, which is, you know, you're looking at six poles, two caps, eight stringers, and then a deck, and I think there are about twenty decking boards all the...
And, and I think that kind of brings up the point, too, Cliff, you don't have to really address this, but, at, at the point, some point, we need to get Cliff to actually get on the bridges and go and inspect them.
Yeah, they're, they're actually worse than what we just...
And it was one of the short bridges that's not on D S D.
It's on D, I mean, you can't get...
That brings up the point that we need to get on that and remember to, to let's do it, so, remind us in your section, if you do it, Cliff.
Since I've mentioned that, we have, uh, a couple of years back, we rebuilt the one north of that on Duncan, and then we rebuilt one over on Rock Hill Church, uh, a couple of weeks ago, too, so...
Yeah, it'd be nice for Budget to kind of figure out how much board budget we need.
Yeah, because I, I burnt through a, a pile and got some reorders, and, uh, we're about to burn through that, I'll forget it.
Didn't y'all get a little statement, see if there was some kind of relief that they could give us, whatever y'all had with the last one?
Uh, that, that's all there, there is, I mean, and that comes through the federal, and it's on the bigger bridges, and we've got the one on the list, and we're keeping on the list, but the bridges, I'm talking about the one that, on Duncan, as far as, it's the short bridge that they don't, that they don't...
Less, less than twenty foot?
I knew normally, you said a bridge... Well, I, I thought what we was going to do is y'all can have a conversation, see if they could give us some relief to inspect them.
We talked with them, and, and they just...
They didn't really have any, anybody, and they, and they, and they subbed it out, and there was just nothing to plug, so they subbed that out.
Yes, but they have, uh, people at the company here, but they send a bridge report, and they do it, so, all sites can be done.
I'm sorry to bring that up, I forgot that was in that conversation, I was just happy to hear we keep that bridge on the bridge.
Yes, yes, and, um, that was another thing, Mr. David Riley, that's, that's over some of the bridge inspection, he came out there while we were working on it, and I asked him some questions and all, he said, what you doing up there, I was just patching it, he said the sufficiency rate will still stay low like it is, so, it won't get pulled off that edge for them coming there, it's time for you to, which is good. I'll walk out, let y'all go.
Uh, thank you, John, and we're at a good point to, uh, take a break, about, uh, fifteen minutes.